Okay. Some things that should be justified here. Hmm. Where's the thick this at? Hmm? Oh, there it is. Actually, I should divide this into two things. This one should be trivial after I do some. I'll try for something else. Wrath, is that what that is? Wrath. That's like more of a what the? A more of a what the face? The A being like K. Then. Wait a minute. Did I do this wrong? Hit begin, of course. You said you did stats, right? If I remember correctly? Wait, what am I doing? That's all you need. I don't know if I mentioned this, but like in. In California, there's a measure that is. Practically removing. Like all the algebra precalculus math. And only allowing like statistics calculus. And like some nuanced classes like survey of mathematics. They say the statistics show that. The introductory classes, the prerequisites don't actually. Um. Don't actually. Correlate to better grades in the other classes and the higher classes. Which is insane. Okay, now I'm trying to show this. Try to show this, so this is not. Exactly correct. I want to math, I want to like math so badly, but it hates me. It doesn't do shit except make me stressed out. The fact that we have to stop still pass uh. The fact that the fact I would still have to pass college algebra to get my BS was probably the main reason why I didn't go back. I see a college algebra is really like probably one of the. Arguably one of the more challenge, the most challenging math classes. I think if you're good with college algebra, then like it should be smooth sailing. That's because lower level classes aren't taught properly and aren't. Designed to actually be a series to the other classes. Fact that I would still have to pass college, oh wait, I just like literally missed. Oh my. Just missed your message, Joseph. Joseph, would you feel confident in being able to prove this? If I told you. To show that these two are equivalent. Would you be able to? Okay. I most likely do what you're doing right now with assumption, yeah. Because these are, these are both sets. Right, these are both, these are both sets, but they're kind of described differently. This is kind of like. Um. Just for recap this. I K plus T is just a set of. Um, A plus T. For all A and I K. And in the interval, the intervals defined as. Um, if R and S is an interval, then that's. That is equivalent to saying that. Um. R less than A less than S for all A. In the interval. Hello, wisdom me, he made it just in time for my math stream instead of the Pokemon unite. One of these days, maybe if you're still around, I'll show you. The Lucario combo. But I won't, I won't do it until like the end. It just had this topic yesterday, I forgot. The set R plus T as the infimum and the set S plus T as the supremum. Math is more fun than unite. So B being in this means that B is equal to A plus T. Or for some. A in the interval. This is so wild. So since A. A is in. I F K. Or uh A S. And then by. The properties. Of inequalities. R plus T is less than, less than. A plus T. Just less than. Um. S plus T. So. A plus T. Is in. R plus T, S plus T. I could just kind of write this as B. So we've shown. Containment in one direction. This is like one of those, this is like one of those proofs that are like obvious. Alright, if you have like an interval, it should be obvious that if you shift everything by T, then everything, the interval itself should shift by T. Now suppose. He is in the interval. R plus T. S plus T. Then R plus T. Is less than B, which is less than S plus T. And so again, by the properties of inequalities. R is less than B minus T, which is less than S. So. B minus T is in. Um. I K. Since B minus T is in I K. B minus T. Plus T. Is in I K plus T. By the definition of what it means to be a set translation. And. He is in. I K plus T. And then we can conclude here. I K plus T is just is equal to. Um. R plus T, S plus T. Yeah, I'm addicted to unite. It's easy to get, it's, it's easy to get caught into that. Because the games are so uh. Fast paced. Are you playing right now? I have been since day one, oh man. I should call this something, let's call this a, let's call this a proposition. Or a lema, a lema. Should we call it, lema? That's who I was thinking it was supposed to. Was what I was thinking was to suppose that I K is. The interval R to S, or R S is an R and R is less than the S. Yeah, I don't even put the R less than S, I just think it's implied, but you should be doing that. Since T is a scalar in R, the part is trivial, then the elements in K. Winds of K in K plus T such that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's kind of like the thought process. But I think this is kind of like the. Like the dirty way of, or like the, the. Like the stuff that you're, you're saying is kind of like um. Is. Is gone through like in, in like finer detail using like the second containment, right? Like you're showing like the machinery of why, why it's shifted, why, why it's like um. Why the shift is going on. Should I call this a lema or proposition? Let's call it a lema. We'll call it lema one. Lema one. Okay. And now. To prove this, I think this follows immediately from level one. Right, so. The length of I K. I mean, we only, you can do this also for unbounded sets. Um. It doesn't just have to be R S. Right, you can have I K equal to negative infinity to S or R, whatever you want to pick. Or I K equal to. S to infinity. Right, it's not that, it's not that much more work to prove. But I figured I should at least show one of them. I did be where we are in Lego Unite Fortnite. Until Meeps is done taking quizzes, then we are gonna go to five, interesting. Are you streaming that? I always see you like. In fives or in three stacks, it's crazy. That's too much for me. And so right now I'm just proving one of the cases, there's two more cases that should be proved. I guess three, if you wanted to count the, the empty set. But. I think as long as it's clear how this one is done, then the other ones are pretty much. Just kind of like my slight alterations. Um, what else am I gonna do here? Okay, so I'm trying to justify this, this is in, this is in um. This is in Royden's book. Royden. Where is it though? Not here, this is chapter four. So. Just for a bit of um. FYI, I guess, I'm working on Royden. Like kind of like off stream. And I plan to kind of work on. Axler on stream, but I, I did this Royden proof. I kind of like. I guess copied it. And I realized there's like details missing, so I figured it would be like fun to, to show that on stream. Since it's kind of, it's more of a undergrad real type of problem. Which is why it's not shown. That's, that's basically the reason why it's not shown in, in the proof, where is this? Outer measure, okay, so we have outer measure, we have containment, so there's order. Why does this look different from what I'm used to? Oh, I have an older edition, that's why. What is this? It's translation invariant, so where's the translation one? There it is. So it's like really short. A proof is short if like you're in agreement that, you know, the set translations are. Um. Have the same size and it also covers this, so I'm gonna be proving this too, because this is, this is not. Technically trivial. It can be proved very, but. That's the whole purpose, like I want to do this first and then I'll work a little bit on Axler. Not gonna lie. I really want to take math analysis course, but I suppose I don't have the prerequisite to enroll in yet. I haven't even done calculus two, oh no. I suppose I need topology too, I'm excited. Yeah, topology, you technically don't need topology, but topology does come up in analysis, it's like. It's part of the. It's, it's very, it's like necessary for analysis, but typically people don't take topology first, they take um. They take analysis first and then they get like a, a soft version of topology. In their, in the analysis class. Like enough to do the, the analysis work. And then um. Yeah, and then people, if they want to take topology afterward, they can, I don't know if it's like a standard for every school, it's not in mine. It's like a extra course that if you want to take it, you can. But yeah, you definitely need to. You should. Calculus is not fully a prerequisite, a prerequisite is like kind of, you shouldn't be familiar with how to like do. Um. The basic proof strategies. Like what I just did here, I proved that these two. Um. I proved that these two sets are, are equal. And the way I proved that was I showed that. Um. I showed that their subsets are to each other. So this is like a, a standard strat, this is like the strategy you do to prove sets are equal. Um, okay. R plus T, S plus T, this is basically what I did in this proof. That could have been slightly a little bit more detailed, but it was kind of like, it's a little overkill to do all the details. But most, all the important stuff is there. So I did this part. Here, this part is. Um, here, I'm, I'm supposing that it's in here and it ends up in. It ends up in here. That's, that's showing the containment. And then for the other one, I suppose it's on the other side and then I show that it's. In there. So you get the equality. I should have been studying because midterm exam for my proof classes less than two weeks, oh no. Yeah. Mine's was a little bit more number, number theory heavy, like I had a lot of number theory functions. Um. Set theory and stuff like that. That was my proof class. Basically, my proof class was discrete, discrete math. I may have calculus two, I did undergrad in Canada, I don't know how my course translates into courses here. Calculus two is basically you did all the integrals, the integral techniques like use of tricks of by parts. Um. You did the applications like finding the, the fluid force, the work done. You did the improper integrals, you did series, infinite series. Yeah, that's calculus two. Um. Yeah, that's basically, that's like the huge, that's the chunk of it. Calk one is limits, derivatives and like introduction to integrals, you learn how to do. Integrals through like the, the rectangles and then do approximations. And then you learn use up, I think, and maybe by parts. Yeah, it's calculus two. But if you want to know, if you want to learn analysis, I'll give you a good reference. It's not an easy reference, but it's a good reference. Um. Where is it? I'm posting in the chat if you're ever interested in learning it. It's not easy, it's, in my opinion, it's like one of the harder math classes to learn. it's not easy it's in my opinion it's like one of the harder math classes to learn but this guy does it very well like it goes to all the details um and they're basically using like the infamous book which is baby Rudin um and so like you get to learn it through the that that book um so that means they construct the real numbers that's what they do for the first four lectures they even do the complex numbers and yeah they basically go over all the all the stuff that you would learn in real analysis so it's a good way it's a good way to I think that's a good like a good source of videos I also want to take discrete but I will already be taking two proof classes next semester and don't want to do three proofs classes in addition to E and M yeah that that's a lot that's a lot for sure yeah so you're taking two proof classes and an E and M class thanks for the reference I'm saving it down no problem there are other I think there are other videos but this is like these are good um they're probably like they're they are challenging but they're good dang that's a lot yeah adding another class would be very that would be a lot of work for sure especially since you're taking E and M you're probably taking the you're probably taking the the one where you have to use a Griffiths book or something comparable to that okay this one has three cases but each case will will is provable if I have now each case should be provable right so the case case one IK is equal to RS right so if it's like a finite interval or I guess a bounded interval bounded open interval then L K is equal to R um L I K is equal to S minus R which is equal to um S plus T minus R plus T which is equal to L I K plus T hey I'm not gonna do the other ones I'm a little too lazy to do it there you go so you prove that the lengths of the intervals are the same when you have set translation and we will call this obviously there's other cases if you have case um case two IK is equal to negative infinity to R or OK is equal to S to infinity case three is the empty empty set those are doable like maybe an exercise you really want to challenge yourself that you can do I would do um I would show that if IK is equal to negative infinity to R then that this is true basically that IK plus T is equal to negative infinity plus negative infinity to um R plus T and so on and then what else did I want to prove um where is this so that's this guy and this is also a lema we'll call it number two number two I wanted to kind of have a different style for this one doing these in blue too not even consistent with my note style blue okay there's one more thing I was gonna show that um this part show this part two it's calculus three that I've not done yet the 3D space one but I learned basics in my physical chemistry course I see physical chemistry what would you use calc three for I mean assuming your physical chemistry is like taking advantage of like um quantum states then you have like uh vector objects and that's like obviously the multi variable stuff right there like the machinery for that was like linear algebra I'm a three let I K um be a set of open intervals such that oh my gosh first got to define what we want to work with let let A be a subset of R an intervals such that A is contained in the union and A plus T is contained in the union this one's a little easier because you don't have to show containing in both directions you just have to go in one direction there are lots in the list it says Purcell as well as Griffiths he also says physics for scientists and engineers book interesting is that was the open stacks uh open stacks one as additional readings I see yeah 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 Purcell is a good one too I'm curious why physics for scientists and engineers that's like a that's like to me if it's if I'm thinking about the same book it's like equivalent to um the university textbook which I guess you could use as a reference to like if you want to review like the the first time you saw E and M Purcell I think uh Purcell who's using Purcell uh Dawn I think Dawn's using Purcell right now right he's learning E and M they're doing a reading group using Purcell yeah the nice thing about that is it has a lot of solutions not all of them but like at least there are some solutions you know okay proof okay I'm gonna be like a little bit more not as a I'm a little bit more sloppy with the proof because I don't want to write every single detail so um let this be set this one also is gonna have parts but I'm only gonna do one such that um A is contained in the union okay then every A in um A is in the union hey Seth how you doing it's the weekend time to stream I think additional readings is fair since it'll be the first time taking the proper E and M class that isn't biophysics oh wow electro physics yeah that would be good yeah for sure I mean you've seen it though at least like yeah it's under the context of some other class but I think as long as you've seen it like in passing you should be okay I think the more challenging parts of that class is like potentials but I guess you'll you'll get there when the time comes in the first passing you you solve um you solved like the potentials um using the integral DQ over R K DQ over R like this is one way you can do it and then you can also can also solve the potential using the line integral I think those both of the ways I don't think there's another way but the nice thing is Griffiths has like a little little book a little triangle diagram to show a relationship between charge and V and E and so going from Q to V is Q to V is basically uh this one and going from E to V is this one right here but in your class I think you're gonna you you're gonna go a little deeper than this like there are other ways to solve potentials like um you had to solve Laplace's equation the triangle familiar has that's good yeah there's more ways to do it though like that that's kind of the that's the way you should have seen it when you when you take the class before the one you're gonna take then you learn things like method of images you learn Laplace's equations in rectangular and in spherical coordinates um and then you learn dipole the dipole approximations okay um so we want to show we want to show this is contained in this so let's just let's suppose so let B be in A plus T then if B is in A plus T then uh B is equal to A plus T or some A in A okay and now since A is an A since A is an A um right we have we have containment right we have um A name implies that A is in the union of the of the um intervals so more specifically A is in um I sub K or some K in the natural numbers do you like uh do you like jazz KK are you a jazzy person do you love jazz me too it's also a very good study of music in my opinion he loved everybody new rap I try I try I think I've tried listening to new rap I don't know I can't really like I can't be bothered to be honest okay and I think this is where the cases come in and so we have case one unfortunately because the intervals the open intervals can be defined differently we have to do it into cases so case one would be um IK is equal to R plus S I'm gonna do this one because this is literally the one I've been doing this whole time I just love all the oldies and the jazzy stuff yeah same I actually grew up listening to oldies like um um like the temptations um who else was there there's um can't think of one off the top of my head I like another names like coming into my head and it's just like not the one I'm thinking about but it's still I guess considered oldies yeah oldies definitely hit different so A and and IK implies um R is less than A is less than S right that's the definition of the interval need more space Need more space. Cut. And paste. On. Or some R and S in the real numbers. And then we can uh, we can do the the translation, right? We can do the properties. R plus T, less than A plus T, less than S plus T. So. Um, A plus T is in. I K plus T, and this is by. Lima one? And. B is in the union. Specifically, it's in it's in one of them, but since it's one of them, it's in the union as well, so. Okay, let's see. S. A plus T is contained in the union. No, it's a subset of the union of I K plus T. And that's how you show um. That's how you show. That the set translation. The cover is like following the set translation. And so I can probably put like a. This is lemma three. That we partly proved. I never knew their names, just the songs. Yeah, when I, when when I was younger, I only knew the songs to like. The the melodies and and kind of like the some of the lyrics, but I never knew their names. That's that's partly why I struggle with remembering it right now. So this, this uh, a three-line proof could easily be extended to. More than three lines, way more. If you wanna fully justify. Um, everything that's that's involved in this. But again, this is this is just real analysis one or introduction introductory real analysis. Level. All right. I'm gonna do this probably tomorrow or something upstream. Okay, that's interesting. That's something that I didn't realize about this book. Um, heck. I didn't realize that the books. Were different, or I mean, obviously they're different editions. This is like a newer one, but I didn't know they threw this in the middle. Interesting. If the bounded interval I is covered by a finite collection. What the heck? I just proved this. I proved this last time. This is part of the homework of the class that I was sitting in. Right? No, 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 this is different. Oh, this is a more general result. I see. I mean, the proof should work exactly the same. It's just modifying it to be more general. What did they do here? For each epsilon greater than zero, the bounded interval T epsilon I. Is covered by a collection of bounded intervals. Okay, this is the collection. It's clear that the integer count is finitely monotone, and so. Interesting. Int Oestein. What does int mean? Is it interior? Lima one for a bounded set E, define its integral count mu int E to be the number of integers in E. Oh, it like it averages this lemma. Looks like. Interesting. The number of integers in E. Oh, yeah, it's basically using the same idea here, like. Is it integers? No, it says it's rationals. Interesting. F star to infinity. Yeah, you don't see that every day. Interesting. B minus A minus one is less than. Okay, this makes sense. Integers for each epsilon greater than zero. Okay, this is just. Using the dilation. Divided by epsilon, take it to infinity, and then it's bounded, so it's like a, it's a. It's the sandwich theorem. Is that what they call it? Sandwich? Interesting. I didn't even notice this, cause this is like the newer edition. Okay, that's my, that's my, that's my piece for Royden. Okay, I'm gonna keep working on Royden's book. If I ever see anything that I am working through that is not fully flushed out, but is like a real analysis. Um, undergrad real analysis type of problem, then I'll probably do it on stream. But now I go back, I go back to. I go back to Axler. Where's Axler? Oh, the comprehensive exam that I had to take. Where the heck is Axler? No way, bro. Do I not have it? I should have it. There it is. Am I in the same spot where I left off? Let's keep going through integration theory. I left off here. I was doing the the integral of simple sun functions, which is basically. Like the linearity. Now I am going to the next. Integration is order preserving. All right, let's do it. Wait, what is this? Monotone convergence. Where is this at? It's just. Oh, I was trying, I was just trying to do this for my. Comprehensive exam. Oh, I shouldn't erase it, cause I'm gonna use it anyways. I'm gonna get to it anyways. Okay, we flushed out the details of this and we resolved um. The things we need to resolve. So now let's go to this one. Where am I? Where am I? Three point eight? So three point eight. Well, what's the scheme that I'm using here? Black. Integration is order preserving. Your professor, I, it is, it is, yeah, that's the guy that I, yeah, that, that's not my professor, but it's the professor that I'm sitting in. It is Ivan. You know Ivan? I should say, does it say his name on it? Maybe he just know. There you go. Professor Ventura. It is Ivan, though. You do, I wouldn't be surprised. Okay. Was a postdoc when I was an undergrad? Oh, interesting. Yeah, he's a very. How can I, how can I describe him? And uh, I wanna say enthusiastic. He is enthusiastic, but there's like a different like description for him. He's very determined to lecture off the top of his head. Yeah, he he. Eye strong, yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good uh description. But, yeah, he's. I liked his lectures. Yeah, I like his lectures. But like, I, he's just, he wants to do things off the top of his head. He hates referencing things. Um, and if he, if he can't remember, he won't, he won't reference it, he will just do it later. I mean, you gotta, I, you gotta give him props, cause like trying to remember all of these strategies, I mean, it's also like, you've probably done this for like. Multiple years, so you probably know the strategies like by heart, but like, so some of these are like very detailed, like some of these strategies are like super in-depth. Um. See, I have example, I have an example here. Kantor function. Where can I see it? Section E. Yeah, some of like the, you have to know how to construct some of these things, and some of them are like. They're like, how, how, how the hell would you remember this? I can't find one, or some of these are also kind of very um. Very challenging to remember. I don't know why I can't find it. Basically, it's like a a set involving like so many unions and inters- and like an intersection. Well, there you go. It's like. I mean, if you've done this enough times, like you probably know, like, okay, I I need to like the, I need to remember that the inverse function of an interval. Um, from A to infinity or negative infinity to A can be described as a union of the union of the intersection of the inverse image of this specific interval. But like. Oh man, I would never remember that, at least not now. Maybe if I did it for a couple of years, but it's stuff like this that shows up in. In in this type of class, that's just like, how do you remember the 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 setup? Ivan is a short for Ivan, Ivanovich? No, it's not. That sounds like a. That sounds like a. Not a um. Latin name. not a um Latin name. That doesn't sound like a Latin name. Yeah, some of these problems are also kind of they're also really challenging. Like these ones are kind of standard. It just requires you to have a good background in real analysis undergrad, but some of these are just like, how the heck do I construct this? How would I know to construct it the way I that you're supposed to? Oh yeah, hi. Forgot to sometimes I forget to do that. I'm a bad streamer. I'll admit. Um yeah, yeah, yeah. Is Ivan aware of you? I could tell him you said hi. See, where am I? Let's see. Okay. A nice small little proof for me to work on. Okay. Have a measure space. Oh, man. I get so self-conscious about my writing. F and G are functions from X two zero to infinity. And they're S measurable. And the integral of F is standard equal to the integral of G. That should make sense. Oh, did I do my proofs here purple? He may not remember, but if you mention mud, he might. I see. I believe it's Russian. I was gonna say Russian, but I I was also thinking like some neighboring regions. But yeah. You aren't. I'm not. Like son of Ivan. Nice and little don't seem to go hand in hand in proofs. That's true. Okay, let's see if there are any details that are missing in this. Okay, suppose P and S partition. Okay, then the infimum of F over A J is less than or equal to the infimum of X of G over A J. I guess we can write the details of that. Alright. Okay, since okay, let's let's do something else. Let um let Maybe I don't need to define it. I was gonna define the infimum by a letter, but I'm just gonna say um since F of X is necessarily equal to G of X for all X in X. The infimum is um the greatest lower bound, so that's um the infimum over A J of F is less than or equal to F of X, which is less than or equal to G of X. I guess I could tack on one more thing. Uh we can do the infimum property, right? I think the property is um this is less than um the infimum of A J of G plus some epsilon, if I remember correctly. Let's take a look. I should remember these things, but I just I just can never remember it. So I'm using the number forty five. Forty five says if Y is equal to the infimum of S, show that for each epsilon, for each epsilon greater than zero, there is an A and S such that Y so the infimum is less than or equal to A, which is less than A Y plus the V one plus epsilon. So that's correct. This is for every epsilon, right? This is it? I think that's it, right? Okay, so Should define epsilon be in the beginning um. Okay, and since this is true for an epsilon greater than zero um that that follows that the infimums have to be less than each other, less than or equal to H A. Okay, those are the details that I just filled in. Hopefully there are no mistakes. For each J, I should probably write for each J um But stuff like this, all this, all these details that I'm writing down, they're like uh that are just not written because it's just it's just undergrad real stuff um. This is for every J in. But I think I think this stuff like if you're if you're learning something like this, I feel like if you're learning something like a measure theory and it's very likely that the book is not gonna like go over every single detail. It's like a good oppo it's a good opportunity to like work on your analysis or at least practice your analysis. And so the infimums are less than each other and then the the Lebesgue lower sum, I think it's defined this way. Let me see. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the Lebesgue, the lower Lebesgue sum is defined in terms of the infimum and so um so the lower the Lebesgue lower sums are are less than or equal to each other um. We can actually write it down more explicitly, right? This is just the properties. So I'll go oh we'll write down a little bit more of the details that are going on in. So this implies and we're multiplying the same measure A J infimum J is less than or equal to the measure of H A. Pimum of G. And then we are taking the sum, right? So um this is by the properties of inequalities. Finally, the sum is less than or equal to the sustained FEMA of H A F that's less than or equal to the sum. And this is also by the properties of inequalities because you're basically using it's basically using the the sum property over and over again. So So here we used um here we used the product property of inequalities where we multiply by a positive number. Um and then here we use the um the sum property of inequalities where we have two things that are less than or equal to and we add on a term. Um think we have, we can see it in this book. It might be more to it. So I used four here. Where's the someone? Oh, that's just like that's the axiom, right? That's the me using um like something like this, but it's not quite this. It's kind of a combination of this and um and just the inequality. So I guess I'll write it down. So we can write the step here. Make sure at least one of the steps. So mu A one infimum over A one F is less than or equal to um mu of A one infimum A one of G. And what we can do is we can add both sides. Infimum A one of F plus mu of A two the infimum F over A two. And that's less than or equal to mu of A one infimum G over A one plus mu of A two over the infimum F for A two. And that is less than or equal to mu of A one. Infimum of G. A one plus. Mu of A two. Infimum over A two of G and this is basically using um. The fact that this is this is true and so. This is less than or equal to this. V N stream and I'm in a match. Thanks for being smart. Thanks for the stream. Thanks for coming by, K K. Okay, so that's kind of basically the justification for the sum. So it's just a bunch of like inequalities um like using like the properties of inequalities. And so this is. F. Are they right it? This is P. Is less than or equal to. G of P. This is by the definition. So we got that less than or equal to, but the integrals are dependent on the supremum. So technically there is one more step that you can do here. Right? It's a it's depending on the supremum. Um. Let me think. So what what what's happening here? That means um. So. So the um I think this is the same strategy, the lower Lebesgue sum. Over F. Is less than or equal to the lower Lebesgue sum over G and that is less than or equal to the integral of of G. This is the definition of the supremum, right? Supremum is the least the least upper bound. The least upper bound, so it's gotta be bigger than it's an upper bound, so it's bigger than anything in the set of lower Lebesgue sums. And then we can apply the same um we can apply the same strategy that we did in the last uh. Literally in the same proof, actually. And then we here the supremum property tells you that there this is less than or equal to the integral of F d mu minus epsilon. All right. Supremum, if X is a supremum of S for each epsilon greater than zero, there exists an A and S such that X minus epsilon, oh, it's less than. Okay. Some reason I thought was equal. Now we're using the same property again, so this is like this is for each epsilon. So. The integral of G d mu oops. F d mu. Minus epsilon. Is less than. Or equal to the integral of G d mu. That I already defined epsilon, right? I mean, I defined it for in a different context, but I'm reusing it, so I'm not defining it again. For every epsilon greater than zero. Thus, the integral of F. Is less than or equal to the integral of G. So this this basically two line proof. This two line proof I extended to one, two, three, four, five. I'll call this six because this is kind of a justification for like how the inequalities are are working for the sum, but. Whatever. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight lines. So the basic the idea here is that they didn't use they didn't use the infimum properties to justify to just justify this. It's it's just an undergrad real thing that you should know um. Just kind of like looking at it and the same thing for the lower Lebesgue sums, right? The lower Lebesgue sums being less than or equal to each other. There should be like a little lema like like whenever you see something like this and it's a supremum or infimum is involved. Then you can automatically conclude that the supremum and infimums are related by the inequality. I'm sure there is and maybe I can write it here and just cite it every time I'm using it. But I'm not gonna do it. This is so wild. Do you understand this? It honestly, it took me a while like to understand this stuff. Um. I had to work really hard to to get good at this type of math. So I'm also in agreement with you. It is wild that I'm able to at least understand it at the level that I'm at right now. I still struggle with like remembering some things about analysis. Okay, I got this. This would take my whole life to understand. I don't know. May may I think. I don't think that's true, to be honest. I think um. It's a co- I think if you like dedicate more time and like it it just requires some commitment. I think it just requires some commitment. I think. If you dedicate the time and you had the right like atmosphere that you can get to this point where you like you understand like all these the way these inequalities work together. I'm not sure if everyone can. That's a different subject, but. I think a lot of people can. Including you. Okay, we're on monotone convergence with the proof of monotone convergence theorem and several other results. We will need to use the following mild restatement of the definition of the integral. Oh, interesting. It's also short. It's also short. So it's basically using it's like describing the integral in terms of simple functions. Alright, I'm gonna write it down. Whether I'm gonna finish it or not is like a mystery. I probably may or may not do it, but. I'll write it down. I'll stream for like another twenty minutes and then I'll call it a day. Come back tomorrow, maybe play some more unite um and then do some more of this analysis. Result. This is three point nine. Intergles via finite simple functions. Thank you for thinking I can. I truly do believe it. Whether you believe it or not, I actually do believe it. I won't deny that it's not easy. I mean that it's yeah, that's not easy. It is difficult, but. It can be, it can be done. The finite simple functions. Is the reason one of the best things about Axle's books is that he like gives a brief little title of the like the theorem that he's or the result that he's basically proving. That is like so not so good. Makes it so easy to find things. You know, it takes seven years to go from algebra one to real analysis, the time we pass anyways, et cetera, et cetera. Exactly. Dang, seven years? Holy moly. Put in this perspective like that's crazy. Suppose this is a measure space and F. It's a function from X two, zero to infinity. And it's also S measurable. Then. Then, then, then. Holy moly, I got this huge thing to write. Okay, okay, I can do it. The integral of F. Is just the supremum. Of these sums. Where A's are disjoint sets. I'm gonna kind of shorten this. There's no reason to list this um. Mm hmm. Maybe I'm writing is probably not good, but I don't want to write even more than I have to. Actually, no, no, no. I know a way to write this. The same thing. It's gonna be the same. There are disjoint sets in the sigma algebra. And disjoint. And disjoint. C one. C M in the interval from zero to infinity. And. F of X is greater than or equal to the sum. This is just too much, man. C J has the characteristic function over A J. I don't have enough space. I guess I do. I want it all on one line. I can do it. I don't think I can. I'm gonna try. I'm gonna use the abbreviations to get us through here. For every X in. Big X. There we go. That's the perspective that finally got me to start studying geometry, to be honest. Life is long. That's true. That is true. Is your geometry um. Is it in the realm of differential or is it algebraic? I think you said algebraic at one point. Was did you say algebraic? Hmm. Jesus. Focus in algebraic, but right now thinking broadly, I see. Holy moly. This guy's just getting kicked to the curb every time. It's a big theorem two. Monotone convergence. Okay. Do I really want to go through this entire proof? Yeah, it's huge. Oh, man. This frickin'. Defining the integral this way is nuts. So we're instead of defining it as lower Lebesgue sums. Uh which I guess I'll show on the PDF just for comparison. So instead of divi- defining in terms of the lower Lebesgue sums and the partition um we're doing. In terms of. Basically, the basically determine in terms of the coefficients or the constants of the associated to the simple function. Interesting. It doesn ' t say A is a partition of X though, or am I not reading it? There are disjoint sets in S but not necessarily a partition of X. That ' s interesting. First note that the left side of three ten is bigger than or equal to the right side by three seven and three eight. So since F of X is bigger greater than or equal to this the sum of the simple functions or the simple function, um the integral is bigger. I ' m going to write this down. Okay, since of X is greater than or equal to M J is the index. C J. While X and X um we get this automatically. This is the integral of F d mu is greater than or equal to the integral of this. Why am I doing this? I need to be more efficient. This is by this is by the above three point eight. And then by three point seven. this this has to equal to the sum. Right, what was the sum here? Three point seven was C K. So J is equal to one M of the C C Js in this case times the measure of all of the A Js. So the integral of F mu is greater than or equal to the sum. So the integral is basically an upper bound to these sums. Yeah, so it ' s an upper bound. Yeah, so the integral of F d mu is upper bound to the set. Ha 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 ha. Um I ' m almost tempted to just call this a letter. Maybe B or something. Does this show up again? I don ' t think so. Just in case, I ' m just gonna do it early on. Let ' s call it B. Let B equal to Oh no, that ' s the wrong guy. Paste. Change color. Okay, there you go. Now I never have to write it again. The upper bound to B thus um the supremum, which is the least upper bound supremum of B is less than or equal to the integral F d mu. Because it ' s the least upper bound. Okay, and that gets to the inequality. Um. Okay. Hey, the monotone convergence. It ' s right after that. Okay, to prove the right side of three point ten is bigger than or equal to the left side, first assume that okay, we assume it ' s less than infinity. And then we assume the infinity. So we have two cases. Okay. Think this is where I ' m going to stop. I ' ll do the rest of it tomorrow. And now, yeah, this is a good place to stop.